Hi and welcome to the Orlando Sentinel's editorial board interview with candidates in Orange County Commission District One, which covers the southwest corner of the county, including Walt Disney World. Austin Arthur, a Winter Garden entrepreneur who has served on many municipal and charity boards, is challenging incumbent Nicole Wilson, an attorney with a background in environmental activism, who was first elected in 2020. Before we started taping, we explained our format to the candidates, and they've agreed that we're not going to have crosstalk or follow-ups and that the discussion will remain focused on issues in this race. And we really appreciate them agreeing to that. And I'm going to dive in with our first question. Orange County has a very broadly involved response to homelessness. What more do you believe county government should be doing to address this issue? Mr. Arthur, let's start with you.
Thanks for the question. Yes, we definitely have a homelessness crisis in Orange County, really the entire state of Florida, including West Orange County, and it's ever increasingly so. It's a big issue right now because the state of Florida put down a law that really a lot of people feel like it criminalizes homelessness. And the issue with it is that you can't have people that are living in homelessness, being on public property, sleeping and this kind of thing, and you have to move them out of that. But the question is, where do you put them? You know, so many of our fellow citizens that are living with homelessness are having to be pushed into the woods and these sort of things, and it's a real crisis. And so the question is, without the funding to build something to where we can place these people that are struggling through this, you know, what do we do? And I think the answer is, well, we have to look at collaboration, collaboration with our surrounding counties and our municipalities. We have some wonderful municipalities in Orange County, and I think that together we might be able to find some solutions with regard to some land that we can get with some programs that we could create so that we can have a place for these folks to go when they are in that time of need. And really, the question is not only about where to put them, but how to holistically solve this problem. And I think that partnering with organizations, of course, such as on the west side especially, Matthews Hope is a huge one, Orange County is partnering with them, and I think we need more of that. I think it's wonderful. But you know, you also have the Health Care Center for the Homelessness with Commissioner Bakari Burns, who heads that up, and it's a tremendous organization. And so I think that the answer in a lot of cases will be partnering more and more with these sort of not-for-profits. They're the subject matter experts, and I think that the more we could do that, the better we will be in terms of mitigating this issue. Because it's not just, you know, it's not just drug addiction and alcohol abuse, it's not just mental health, those are the top three we hear about a lot, but we have a housing crisis in Orange County, and the rents really is too high. So it ties into a lot of the problems that we have.
Thank you so much. Ms. Wilson, same question.
Thank you, and I hope I didn't mute. I'm going. So I will tell you that this problem has exacerbated over the years. I came into office in 2020 when we were in COVID, and during COVID, there were eviction moratoriums, which means that people who are actually potentially struggling with, you know, finding new employment or increased cost of living or healthcare costs, they then, after those things passed and the eviction moratorium ended, were really in big trouble. Our rents continued to climb. So actually, what we did, what I did, and spearheaded with a couple other commissioners, was to try to approach rent stabilization for a short period of time and to make sure that the people who were coming out of that eviction moratorium weren't immediately displaced. As you all know, because you've been here long enough, we put that on the ballot. The county citizens were able to weigh in and overwhelmingly supported a stabilization measure. It was promptly preempted by the state of Florida, and so we were never able to implement anything to actually stabilize the rent. What we were able to do, however, was we opened up an Office of Tenant Services to try to provide support and resources. That is only one avenue, though, right? That's the rents. And if we look at the homelessness issue at large, we have to take multiple approaches in order to get to it. So the second one we know for sure, because the data continues to show for us, is that we have specific shortage in shelter beds. We get a lot of attainable projects, we get a lot of luxury projects, we don't have any of the lower. So what we've done is identify inventory in the Orange County's actual lands to be able to supply, to partner with a nonprofit for additional shelter beds, and those will be coming in the next few years. We've also been able to partner with nonprofits for drop-in centers so that we could do things like get people their identifications so that they could then get rents. Thank you, I see I'm out of time.
Thank you. I have a more specific follow-up along the same lines. You've both sort of touched on the homelessness issue in sort of a holistic type of way, and Orlando's been tagged as one of the least affordable counties in the nation. What should the county be doing to increase the supply of affordable housing, especially when it comes to workforce housing? And if you could get into more specifics on that, I would appreciate it, and we'll start with Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, yes, this is a, it's a huge topic, and like you said, we could probably spend the entire interview on it because it is, I think, top of mind for most people. We, workforce housing in particular, the face of it has changed because we understand our largest employers in the area are interested in working alongside of other groups and governments to try to get to the problem. So Catchlight Crossing, perfect example, we were able to pass all of their plans, it was with Universal Studios, so you're talking about one of our largest employers. We broke ground sometime last year, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to see it soon. But this was a private-public partnership where it wasn't just Universal in Orange County, but there was also a developer who was interested in actually investing there, and Valencia College was there, and Orange County Public Schools were there. And those partnerships, to be able to do that, to bring workforce housing close to the actual employment center, it's the ideal set of circumstances. So we have to look for those opportunities and take them. But that's a process, and it requires a lot of collaborative work. So I'm hoping that we continue to see those processes go forward in partnership with our largest employers. I think there's, once again, the missing middle has to include opportunities for us to do adaptive reuse in some of the areas that I think already have infrastructure so that they can stay, you know, they can stay less expensive to live in, and that they have the, adaptive reuse has the infrastructure there, sidewalks, bus stops, but we don't have to start fresh, knock down a forest. And a lot of those are already in areas of employment. So in order to incentivize those, we're looking at updating areas of the code, and we've already been able to pass some breaks for people who want to put ADUs on their property when it's appropriate, so that if they want to add some kind of a unit for a family member. Right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arthur, same question.
Yeah, it's a critical issue, and the problem is, it really kind of, we have another issue which kind of conflicts with the solution that is a part of affordable housing. We have affordable housing crisis because we don't have enough units on the market, it's simple supply and demand. And at the same time, we have an infrastructure crisis in Orange County, that's why I always talk about infrastructure first. You know, with regard to the project that the commissioner mentioned, she's absolutely right, Universal did a wonderful job working in partnership with other stakeholders, including the county, of course, in making this workforce housing project, and it's very exciting. And I think that when you, when you look at projects like that, we need more of that, but they have to be in the right place at the right time. And so when you look at an area like Williamsburg, Hunters Creek, these sorts of areas, there's some opportunity there, we have some, maybe not affordable, but multifamily housing going up along John Young Parkway, and that might be a good thing, you're getting more units. But the problem is, there's a lot of flooding problems in those areas. So we have to make sure that we're not just concreting this whole place because we're gonna, we're gonna have some serious issues, and we already do have serious issues. So that's why I always say it has to be in the right place and the right time. We had an affordable housing project, the Disney project, very controversial for many residents. And I think that when you look at a project like that, is it the right place? Does it fit the character of the area? It can be, and that's the number one for, is it the right place? But number two for, is it the right time? Is the infrastructure there to support it? And you look at Avalon Road, that's a failing road, we need to make sure that that project gets done, we need to have that road widened. I know that multimodal transportation is the talk of the town, and it's critical, and I hope that my grandchildren one day will be able to see something like multimodal transportation on the west side of the county, but that's not how this county was built, so it's gonna take a long time. I think we need to start working toward it now, I'm in full support of that. But at the same time, just like when I was a paramedic, you gotta stop the bleeding first, you gotta stop the bleeding for the patient, and then you take care of him holistically. So what does that mean in our case? In many cases, it does mean road widening in areas that need it, and we need to fix those problems now. When you have the infrastructure there, then you could get to more affordable housing in certain areas, but you can't, you can't put affordable housing in places that can't support it, and that's the biggest struggle we have on the west side of the county. And I think the way you really solve this problem and that conflict is by working in partnership with people. You gotta sit down with everybody, all the stakeholders, even the ones you disagree with, to get the best solutions for the residents.
Thank you for that answer. We're gonna pivot to another hot topic. So recently, the commission voted to put a rural boundary amendment on the ballot. How do you plan to vote on this and why? And we'll start with Mr. Arthur.
So I was originally had some concerns that I expressed actually to your outfit, the Sentinel, and my concerns with municipalities, I was very happy to see that that conflict was carved out. As soon as that conflict was carved out, I went to West Two and told them I'm for it. And the next day, the commission did the right thing, and they moved it forward. I think that I also, I also expressed concern with ballot initiatives in general, because sometimes the wording is tricky and we get lawsuits. And that's why I'm against the annexation amendment, which is very similar tied to this, because I think it will be caught up in a lawsuit, and I think the lawsuit, we will fail if Orange County goes forward with that. So the rural settlement amendment, I mean, I am very much for that, I have a long record, actually, a public record. For several years now, I did a podcast on the Orange Observer, and I used to rail against development all the time, because we don't, you know, not everybody, we're not the urban core here everywhere in Orange County, we don't want to become the city of Orlando, we love the city of Orlando, but it's not the same thing. So we need to protect our rural settlements, we got a couple big ones in West Orange County. So to make it a little bit tougher, to make a change, to make it five-two, that's really what this does, it makes it harder for that to switch, I am 100% for it, I will be personally supportive of it, and you better believe I already have my sample ballot ready for my family and friends, everybody always asks, and they're gonna vote for it too, because that's what we need on the west side.
Thank you for that. Ms. Wilson, same question.
I've been working on this since before I was a commissioner. One of the things that we knew very early on, when I was working with groups trying to do preservation of our ag and natural lands, was that there weren't enough tools in our toolbox to be able to really give a level playing field for potential development pressures. What we see, the reason why that happens, is because ag-zoned and rural enclave lands tend to be cheaper on the market. And so they're attractive to developers to buy, then work through the process of having a complete comprehensive plan change and rezoning in order to then get as much density on there as possible. In order to do that type of large change to our comprehensive plan, there should be something very decisive. And what we've seen time and time again on my board since I've been in office are narrow votes on these very consequential, humongous developments. And I'm not talking about affordable housing, I'm not talking about attainable housing, I'm talking about luxury, single-family housing on the other side of the Econ River or way past, out in by New Independence Parkway. And so what we end up with is additional sprawl, additional cost, trying to put in infrastructure, because even though "infrastructure first" makes a great slogan, it's really hard to put in infrastructure without funds, and developers only kick in once the building is there. So you know, it's a chicken or egg game when it comes to figuring out how to actually pay for infrastructure. The rural boundary addresses many of those things, because we understand the cost goes up and up the further out we get, and we need to fight sprawl. We need to densify our already urban areas where we've got infrastructure in place.
Thank you for that answer. I've got a similar question when it comes to growth in natural areas. In your view, is the fight over for the push to put a high-speed roadway through Split Oak Forest, and what more should the county do on that issue? And we'll start with Ms. Wilson.
Yeah, this is another one I've been working on before since I got into office, but anybody who follows, I think, these types of battles know that sometimes they do take, you know, years and years and years and years and years of advocacy. I'm not, I don't think it's over yet, I'm not giving up, because I believe that at this stage, that the residents of Orange County purchase that property as an investment for public to be able to have and to hold forever alongside of the citizens of Osceola County, and those documents are still in place, they have not been suspended. The way that the roadway continues to prevail through these various layers is by using a loophole, something called a linear facility, so that they can circumvent the protections. My feeling about it is that potentially, if we end up in a court, or they end up in a court, and they have the opportunity to be heard, that someone will scrutinize that particular use of linear facilities. I don't know if that's gonna be the outcome, my hope is that they'll still find a way to go around. I think the public has been really clear that they need to go around. I know that there's been a lot of dialogue from Osceola to Orange County saying, oh, well, Osceola County feels this way, and Orange County feels this way, but nobody's asked the Osceola County residents. We know how Orange County residents feel, because they weighed in at 86% of the voting public, which is just unheard of as far as a turnout for a charter amendment to protect a natural land. And so I think if you ask the citizens of Osceola County, they would feel the same way, and if the winds of change in the political world put the right people into place, we may be able to finally actually pull that off of the plan. So it's not over till they roll those bulldozers in, and I will never give up, because as an environmentalist in the state of Florida, you can't, you've got to be vigilant, and so we, in Orange County, we need to continue to support anybody's efforts who want to pursue the protections.
Can I go?
Yes.
I wasn't sure, I suppose the way I was being polite. Okay, I wasn't sure if you'd cue me each time, so, okay, well, yeah, this is, of course, is a very important issue, it's an important issue for the whole region, it's right, it's true what the commissioner said, that people don't want to see that this area is gonna be bulldozed over, nobody wants that. The issue now for Orange County is that this is no longer in Orange County, it was never in West Orange County, so it was always something, of course, I was concerned about, but I have more issues I'm focused on, on West Orange County that I paid attention to. But I will tell you this, now that it's not in West, in Orange County anymore, and it seems like probably the commission's not gonna ever be seeing this issue before them again, what we need to do is, we need to make sure that it's done the right way, and we could still be advocates as commissioners, you know, even in Orange County, even if it's not affecting Orange County directly, we know it affects the region, we need to be right up front and center. Wakaba Parkway is a great example, for example, for, take one for example. Wakaba Parkway was done correctly, it's the most, probably the most environmentally sensitive project of this nature that has ever been done before, working with incredible NPOs that have been helped, helped to make this possible with trail paths and everything for the nature, and it's received many awards. So I bring that up as an example of how we need to move forward, because what I would hate to see is that we're chasing something that is not within the purview of Orange County anymore, and then we move, we lose the mark. Now, I am for advocates to continue to fight for that, and we gotta do everything we can to protect our natural environment, but what I would say is, most certainly, we have to work with people to do this protection. There's 1,550 acres that are on the table contiguous, right next to the parklands there, and we need to make sure that those don't go off the table either. I think now, it was at one point, opportunity for the county to have, and now it's the state that's gonna be in control with that, hopefully they take care of it nicely and build it up for the natural environment there. But I think working in a partnership mentality is the best way to go. I think being adversarial often has a negative effect for what you really want in the end. So I intend to sit down with all the stakeholders myself, including CFX, we gotta do it, because we gotta make sure it's done right.
I wanted to circle back to something that you both talked about earlier, which is transportation infrastructure. As you both know, Orange County tried and failed to get a sales tax dedicated to mass transit and road expansion. I know that there was some concern that District One wasn't gonna come in for much under that, under that proposal. But I would like to ask you, going forward, how would the county pay for that, that transportation infrastructure, including mass transit? And what are your priorities? And do you think that that sales tax needs to go back before voters? And let's start with Mr. Arthur.
Yeah, so we have a real crisis here with our transportation, and we don't have a means to fund it. So it's not wrong to say that we need to potentially look for new revenues to pay for this, especially with the liabilities that we have coming online, whether we like it or not, whether we think it was a bad deal or not to begin with, the fact that we're gonna be having to pay for Sun Rail now, that's a liability we have to pay for, it won't pay for itself. And so how are we gonna do it? The gas tax is ever a depleting tax, you know, we have more people working for home, we have more people running around in these Elon Musk cars, so there's less tax on the gas, and that's how we fund things in the state of Florida, that's a big part of it. So we need to find out solutions. I mean, the budget has gone up incredibly in terms of Orange County's budget, it's almost a $7 billion budget four years ago, it was something like 4.4 billion. So we, you know, we gotta look at the budget, and we gotta see if there's room to help. But also, I think that the question is, if it should come back to the voters, that's not the question, the question is, when it comes back to voters? I guarantee you, it's coming back to voters. So what we need to do is, we need to come up with solutions to say, hey, first, what was wrong with the first version of it? You know, West Orange County didn't like it too much, we need some road improvements, a little bit more isolated road improvements, a part of that plan, because like I mentioned before, multimodal, that's a thing of the future, I love it, but it's a thing of the future. We need to make solutions now for our failing infrastructure in West Orange County. And I think that one of the things that you could do, a lot of the municipalities supported this, all the mayors on the west side in District One supported the tax, because there is that portion that'll go to the municipalities. But I think if we are saying that we want the taxes, the tourists to chip in on our roads, if we truly believe that that's what this tax is for, that the tourists can chip in, well, I like the tourists shipping in, but maybe, just an idea for discussion, maybe we'd lower property taxes for our residents, lower the avalorium in exchange if this tax goes through. And it's just an idea for discussion, because that's what needs to happen, we all just gotta sit down and talk about it, we need to talk about it now, not just a few months before it has a potential of going on the ballot.
Ms. Wilson.
I was gonna say that I believe that my voting record was really clear on this, not because I didn't believe in infrastructure investment, but because I was concerned with what my residents, what Orange County residents were gonna be getting for that investment. As we know, a sales tax, as proposed, it's a regressive tax form, which means that no matter what your income is, no matter what your wage is, when you go to buy something, you're gonna pay the additional sales tax on that. And so what my concern was, and what I continue to be concerned with, is that we're not asking the people who are continuing to make money on growth to pay enough back into the system about, to pay for the things that they're impacting. So what I advocated for right out of the gate in 2021 was to increase our impact fees, to make sure that transportation impact fees are finally caught up, it had been stagnant for 17 years. We are so far behind that we are gonna be swimming our way out of that for a very long time. But we did, we were able to pass that impact fee my second year in office after going through the required public hearings based on state law. And now, what I tell you about the transportation sales tax is, unless I can articulate how it will in particular help District One residents in Orange County across the board, I won't support it, because I do feel like it's very impactful for people who are wage workers, low-wage workers, and I think it's a very difficult time to justify this type of tax increase. I want to clarify also, we have never increased the millage on property taxes, and our overall budget proposal for this year is 6.9 million. So I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from that Mr. Arthur has, but we are continuing to be very vigilant about the types of impacts our homeowners have, and I think, you know, we don't want to kneecap people who are selling things, and our merchants, which we do, if we continue to add onto those sales taxes. So yes, our transportation needs good funding, we need to make sure we're getting what we need from the developers who are making lots and lots of money and then leaving town without putting in the right infrastructure.
Thank you for that answer. I will switch gears a little bit, I want to talk about accessibility. Do you think that the county commission is accessible enough to regular citizens, including their ability to follow commission business and attend meetings? And what changes, if any, would you propose to things like public records, accessibility, and meetings? And we'll start with Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, I love this topic, transparency was one of the reasons I came into office. I think Orange County does it pretty well, and we try to, you know, you see the agenda come out ahead of time, we try to notice, you know, everything twice, we have, but I noticed, as part of the reason why I ran in 2020, that it was very difficult to access the commission unless you were powerful or wealthy. And that is why, you know, I rolled out one of the things that I put into place over these last few years, is district office hours, because I felt like if you couldn't make it downtown, if you were somebody that, you know, transportation was an issue for you, I needed to be somewhere in your neighborhood at least once every couple months, so I rotate them throughout the district, and I go Williamsburg and Hunters Creek, and we do Dr. Phillips and Winter Garden and Horizon West, because that way, people can get to me close by, and I've had people come up to meet me on a golf cart, I've had people walk, I've had people bike. And talking about what they're concerned about, I do think it's hard for them to get downtown and to get those two or three minutes up in front of the Board of County Commission. I've been there, I was an advocate for years and years coming up, so we continue to look for those opportunities. I've held over 400 community meetings since coming into office in 2020, and since we were on lockdown in 2020, that was a major feat, so you almost have to shrink that into three years. But it is part of what I believe allows us to get things done, because it doesn't, we can explain an initiative or an ordinance update, and we can get support for it, or we can hear from residents what their concerns are and work through that language before it's ever adopted. And we've been successful doing that throughout the time that I've been here, and we've updated a number of ordinances that were 30 and 40 years old that were, you know, needed to be updated, by putting them through a community meeting, having them do a public hearing, and then making sure that we had resident input along the way.
So this is, Mr. Arthur, yes.
Thanks, thanks, Jay. So this is a big issue for me as well. I think that community meetings are so important, I love what the commissioner's done with making sure that we have more of them, I look forward to continuing that, I think that she's right about it. In addition, what I would say is that we also have to be personally available often and frequently and consistently for residents, to have those one-on-ones, one-on-two, whatever it might be, because it's a bit different than the community meeting. So I think that's an additional layer that we can make sure that we add on to for commissioners, just to be a little bit more accessible than maybe historically has been so. And, you know, you take, for example, some areas like Dr. Phillips area, the Big Sand Lake, they got a wonderful MSTU there to help that lake, and it's fueled by citizens, and they have an advisory board, and they make this advice, but EPD doesn't seem to want to do what they're asking. So this is a big problem, this is where the commissioner steps in and has to have that communication piece to help those residents out, because they feel like they're being left behind. And in addition to that, I think that when you, when you discuss things like sunshine law and all this kind of stuff, well, I think it's ridiculous that if you want to request a few emails from a commissioner's correspondence, the county wants to charge you thousands of dollars, you know, talk about a barrier to entry, talk about only the rich and powerful can get access. So I think that that's kind of ridiculous, I mean, I know that when I go to my email, I do a search keyword search, you know, firefighter union, and everything's gonna pop up. So I think that it's kind of strange that it's so expensive for regular folks to be able to get that sunshine access, and I think that needs to change, and, you know, I'll do what I can, I know that there's, it's, you only got so much power as a commissioner, but we sure can try and be a voice.
Thank you for that. A totally different topic. So the county has previously introduced consumer legislation, an example being a ban on the sale of puppies and kittens. Are there other consumer measures you'd like the commission to consider? And I'd like to start with Mr. Arthur.
Yeah, this is a great topic, and I think that with the puppy stuff, you know, we have a wonderful animal services with Orange County, I would love to see that, just on that topic real quick, to work towards a real no-kill shelter and work with that to make sure that our, that our puppies that we have in Orange County, just since the topic's brought up, are really being taken care of. So I look forward to being an advocate for that, too. But to your direct question, what else can we do? As a businessman, I think that one thing that I hate to see is our consumers being taken advantage by bad actors in our community. I know that Orange County has done some work as well, from, you know, when there's hurricanes or national disasters, to make sure that those bad actors are sought out and exposed. But it's not only during storm season and after critical disasters like that, that's wonderful to do. But I would love to expand on that, and just an idea would be, every year, every business in Orange County has to go up for renewal of their business license. So I say, you know, why don't we go, and if Orange County can do a little bit of work, not too much work, do a little search, and you could cross-reference when an applicant comes in to renew their thing, to go into the DBR, the DBPR, the state's DBPR, to see if there's any issues with that business, and then what Orange County can do, again, just an idea, is maybe make a list for consumers to know about it, or maybe if it's really egregious and they've really done some really bad things, illegal things, maybe they don't even get their renewal in business, because we need good businesses in Orange County, not corrupt businesses, not businesses that are gonna take advantage of our residents. So that's just, you know, one idea that I've had on my mind, because business is an important thing for me, and we want the good businesses in Orange County, not the bad ones.
Thank you for that. Ms. Wilson, same question.
Thank you so much, I actually am very proud of the Thank you so much. I actually am very proud of the work we did, um, with the retail pet sales. And I think it's, it's completely different issue than, um, than the funding needed for our updated shelter, and that is coming. But that, we, we found out that we were at the tail end basically of an illegal operation, a puppy mill operation, but also to your point, a consumer fraud operation where people were actually being, um, sort of put into these, these untenable loans in order to, to pay for ultimately an unhealthy animal. And it was really tragic to learn about and to try to figure out how to navigate protecting those folks. Orange County, we have a robust consumer protection division. And one of the things that we realized that we needed to do was to put within that, as we were hearing from residents after COVID about they're losing their, their rent or hearing their rents go up by, you know, double and triple. Um, we needed to make sure that if tenants had questions about their legal rights and, and concerns, that we had some resources available for them. So we've included that in the same level of operations. And if anybody out there has any concerns, they can go to the Orange County, Florida website. You can actually type in what your concern is. It opens a case. And if it's something that is in the housing market, you end up being able to talk to somebody over in our office of tenant services. If it's something that to do with your property tax or being potentially defrauded about your title, then you can end up at the, we have somebody that just does that through the comptroller's office. And so really, unfortunately, our consumer protections follow where we see people being victimized. But we've been very proactive in making sure we're, we're putting a stop to those things when we see them. And we're being as public as we can every time there's some kind of a fraud out there. So we work very closely with FDLE. We look very closely with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And we make sure that when we can offer supportive services that are not criminally related, that we're doing that. And we have great nonprofit, nonprofit legal partners that we're able to refer to.
Sorry, can you repeat the question for me? Because I thought, I thought we had the answer.
Sure, I'm sorry. Um, yes.
You've already.
I did, right?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, all right.
I was waiting for Jay.
I wanted to make sure I wasn't messing up, so glad to be on my track.
Yeah, no, you're good. I think Jay, you're asking the next question.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll be on standby waiting for it.
That was our fault.
Sorry for the mix-up. The county's efforts to leverage hotel taxes for local priorities have fizzled and along with a separate plan to introduce a new impact tax to fund affordable housing. Do you believe that tourist development taxes should support community priorities like transportation? And Mr. Arthur, we will start with you.
Yeah, I think that the residents certainly believe it. I mean, you hear time and time again, when residents speak up, and listen, I take a lot of my opinions from knocking on doors. And when I knock on a door, I haven't met one resident that doesn't feel that way. But here's the question, and, and I feel like a lot of times residents are gaslit on this issue because there's not a clear understanding of what's going on. The county commission has to follow the law and it's state law of how those, uh, funds are utilized. And that's been the historic way those funds are utilized. That's why the funds were started. It was originally one of the biggest projects, the first projects in the nineteen seventies was to build the convention center. And that had a huge four billion dollar impact on our economy a year, which is if you think about it, I mean, that's twenty dollars turns into four thousand dollars. I mean, that's a good impact. But the question is, should these fees be utilized? Should these taxes be utilized for our infrastructure crisis and our housing crisis? I think that the residents are very clear that they want to see that. So this is a Tallahassee issue. When Tallahassee is going to go ahead and address this issue and decide if they do that there needs to be a change. Well, then my job as a commissioner, I would hope, I would think, is to be a liaison for our people and all of our stakeholders, including the I Drive Corridor, for example. We need to be working with them and CFHLA and all these organizations to come to the table with our residents who have spoken, I think, and say, listen, this is what we want to see. This is how we want to do it. What can we do to make this possible so that we don't have a negative effect on our economy? But at the same time, we're getting what seems to be a majority of people want. So that's what I believe needs to happen is that as soon as Tallahassee is, when they decide you, that's your state reps and your state senators, you could go ahead and talk to them about it. Uh, but when they decide to do that, if they decide to do that, you better believe I'm going to be at the table because it's critical we get it right. In the meantime, I'm going to follow the law. And so that's, uh, my stance on the very important TDT dollars, which, uh, are three hundred and thirty billion, uh, million dollar surplus. So it's a big deal.
Thank you for that answer. Ms. Wilson.
So I'm sure, Mr. Reddick, you have read my op-ed on this when the vote was coming to the Orange County Board of County Commissioners. It was very difficult for me to conceive of a new billion-dollar ballroom when we don't have a safe way to get from I-4 to that ballroom at the end of I Drive. It is, you know, the intersection there at Big Sand Lake and I-4 has just been a nightmare for a long time. And I know that's a DOT project and it's coming and that we have a pedestrian overpass that we've paid for. But the point that I was trying to make with that, um, particular analogy was that saying that things like transportation and especially in our tourist corridors or our residential areas that serve as housing for our tourist workers, isn't in conflict with our tourist business. It is actually supportive of the tourism industry to take care of all of the infrastructure in Orange County. And a good investment in multimodal transportation would benefit all of our industries, not just our, our tourism, but the state law, to Mr. Arthur's point, does require that it benefit the tourism industry. So I believe that there will continue to be uses even under the law as it's written right now, if there is political will across the board. I will say that I'm very proud of some of the adjustments that we were able to make without creating, you know, without dumping out the entire apple cart this year. And one of those was an increased investment in our arts and cultural affairs. And, you know, we talk about a, a five million dollar injection into arts and cultural affairs the year that, um, the state decides that it's no longer funding some of those things. It becomes unbelievably important to our community. So I'm very proud of that. And I believe that if we continue to pursue what is in the state law, which it does include required or necessary infrastructure, including restoration of estuaries and bodies of water in areas of tourism, that we will find ways to utilize the TDT in beneficial ways for the community that also benefit the tourism corridor.
Thank you very much. We have actually gone past our time by a good bit, but it was really worth it to hear what both of you had to say on some really important issues. And I'm sure that we could all think of half a dozen more that we could talk about. But before I ask you to make your closing statements, I would like to remind our readers, the Orlando Sentinel will make an endorsement in this race, but that's shouldn't be a stopping place for you. Both these candidates have put out a lot of information about how they feel and how they would vote on the issues that you feel are most important, websites, social media, appearances at other forums. And of course, there's our excellent news coverage, which I'm sure that you've been following as well. Um, so take a look at everything you can find and, and, and at both these candidates, decide who best fits your values as the District One County Commissioner. And be sure and vote on August twentieth or before. And, um, with that, I am going to go ahead and, and give them a chance to wrap up their pitch for why you should choose them. And we'll start with Mr. Arthur.
Well, thanks so much and thanks for having me again. It was a nice, quick time. It felt quick. Uh, but I'm grateful to have been on here. So I think that with West Orange County specifically, our side of the county, that's the side I'm focused on, is we got an infrastructure crisis. We have way too much development pounding through. And this is an issue that is not new for me. It's something that I've been railing against for a long time. People can go to the Orange Observers website and find my podcast. Since 2021, I've been talking about it. And so it's critical that we understand that Orange County will grow and we cannot stop that. People that tell you that, I mean, it's, it's a lie, you know? I, I, I got beachfront property in Arizona. I could sell you if you believe it. And so we need to control the growth. We need to slow it down. We need to make sure that the infrastructure is there first. And the way you do that is not just by saying it. I mean, it's important. I think most of us believe that in West Orange County, but we have to be effective. And you got to be effective by working with people, sitting down with the people that you disagree with. And you meet with them and you work it out and you work out negotiations. We see it happen in other districts. We see other districts get their improvements and their developers are paying for it. We don't see that here. So I think that needs to change. We need to hold their feet to the fire. And so in addition to that, I think that we, we really need some fiscal conservatism in Orange County. You know, like I mentioned, the, the, in the last four years, the budget has grown 55%. We've got commissioners getting pay raises. We've got more staff. And then we got new taxes. For the first time in seventeen years, uh, we have an MSTU tax raise. And, uh, so I think that we need to look at these things and, and make sure that we're being fiscally conservative. And finally, public service is a big issue for me, uh, public safety. And we need to work with law enforcement. I'm very grateful to have been endorsed by law enforcement. And so we, we enjoy that, but we also know that it's not just about law enforcement. It's about early intervention. That's why I'm very grateful to serve on several community boards that do just that. Eight Waves Children and Family Services, giving these children and these young men especially a purpose in life and making sure that they have the education and the tools to do it. Uh, Habitat for Humanity, happy to be on that board because we know that putting people in homes changes their trajectory for generations. And so in addition to that, you know, we just need to work with each other. We need to understand that a lot of us have the same goals. The commissioner and I actually agree on a lot of things, but it's about effectiveness. And so I hope that everybody will go to votethawsonarthur.com. That's votethawsonarthur.com and check me out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wilson.
All right, so it's not a debate. I'm not debating. I just want to make sure that we're really clear on what policies have been put into place. And we're talking about my, my legacy, my tenure, the things I've worked really hard on. And the only two places I've ever advocated for increasing the tax have been for our firefighters. So I'm not sure if what Mr. Arthur is asking for is to defund our firefighters, but that's the only place. The only second one is to, the only second one was to actually make sure our developers are paying their fair share and impact fees. Um, otherwise your millage has not changed here in Orange County in four years. Your property values increase because people do want to live here. And so that's a, that's a positive thing. I want to let my residents know, whether they're new or not, that I'm committed to working every single day of a second tenure. And here in Orange County, a commissioner gets two four-year terms. And when you have that amount of time, the good news is that you get to work really hard and then go back to your life. And that's what I want to do. I want to work for these next four years for you, um, and then go back to my life. I will tell you that after these last three and a half years, I think we continue to get more and more done. We've been, I've been successfully able to, um, I have four hundred and plus community meetings, fifty community events. It included, um, bike fitting, bike helmet fittings and health and safety fairs. We've had a lot of fun out there. Um, I've successfully championed the passage of a tree protection ordinance, a wetland code update. Um, and a thousand acres, a thousand acres of conservation land have been put into conservation over the last three and a half years. And so these are the things I want to continue to work on for you. I know it's a priority. Yes, infrastructure is also, and we're going to continue to play catch-up for a while. But just stick with me, we're going to get it done without some kind of, um, a crazy new tax. So I thank you for, for allowing me this opportunity. I thank you for doing the great job reporting you all have done over this time. And I encourage anybody that's watching this to check out votenikolewilson.com.
Thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure having the chance to talk with you. And I think, um, District One voters have had a lot to think about and we wish you both best of luck.